This week is busy.
This week's group is busy. It's been some busy. I mean, we do have certain meetings. It's a little bit of a...
Okay.
That's real? Thank you.
You got it.
I think we're not bad.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was gonna leave a chair out of the way for Apple.
You can hurt.
Yeah. I know him.
You don't want that bite on you.
I have my questions.
Yeah. A lot of candidates. It's Friday. It's Thursday. Okay.
Oh, okay.
Friday before noon. Yeah, sometimes it's from the third. That's four. Yeah, that's what I see. Yeah, I do have it. I do have it. So, remind you though.
Sorry.
Oh, we, yeah. We started early. Yes. Yeah, I think that, I think that, I think that, um... He came, of course, maybe that's why. What do you want? What do you want to say? What do you want to go back? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Good evening and welcome. Sorry for the delay. Well, she talked, she talked. I would call the meeting to order and ask, are there any public comments, Mr. Gates? No, no. Then we will move immediately into the budget workshop number four. Chancellor Hadley.
Number four. Three is supposed to be the charm, right? Is that right? I hope so. So, maybe, maybe I've gotten over the hump already. I don't know. Good evening. Good evening. Board members and all of you, JCC members, and thank you all for being here. I am very pleased to talk about success within reach. That's our daily mantra. Success within reach. How can we make sure that whatever we do is all about our students and the success that they gain from allowing us to help them on their journeys? Every person who works at Tarrant County College District Board members is dedicated to that proposition. That every student who comes here should have an opportunity to be successful. That's what we care most about. If we look at the agenda for this evening, want to talk a little bit about capital improvement projects, um, a little, and then, of course, go into the proposed budget and then tell you what I'm asking you to consider. I don't know where Nina Petty is at this point. Oh, she's right there. I was gonna say, I can't go into capital improvements and have you out of the room just in case. Just in case. Thank you, Nina. So, the first thing I want to do, in case I forget one more time, is to ask you to look at those gorgeous pictures. They're all ours. We never have to worry about stock pictures. We don't use stock pictures around here. Oh, thank you so much. We use Tarrant County College students. That's all we need, Tarrant County College students. Aren't those beautiful pictures? And thank you, Ms. Shelley, for always finding you and Deidra.
Dee, yes.
Yeah, Dee finds those beautiful pictures. So, our capital improvement projects. Mrs. Vandergriff, you see the first one up there?
I like technical.
See, technical is up there. Absolutely. Uh, the Center of Excellence for Visual, Technical, and Performing Arts. We're all very excited that you, board members, have given me the authority to move forward in finding ways to make that project work. And, of course, what we're working on now is with the city of North Richardson Hills, and they are just as eager and gung ho about making sure we get this building built as we are. So, that, that makes things that much easier to handle. They're in the process, however, of working with the TIF board to get them to agree to expand the TIF. Where we want to build the facility on our campus, which we think is absolutely best, that facility be on our northeast campus, uh, they must change the boundary lines so that that can happen. And when that happens, um, we hope we are ready to collect our check for eight-plus million dollars that the TIF has in store for us, and that will give us the money that we would need to come on up here. There's a seat right there for you, Bree. Uh, that would, um, no, right here, next, oh, oh, I didn't see Karen back there. I was looking for you, Karen. I, I talked to your fellow JCC members in your absence, so, I'm sorry. And they, they answered for you. You might talk to those three on the end and say, what did you tell her? But, anyway, um, as soon as, as the TIF, if we think there will be no problem with the TIF expanding the boundary lines so that the building can be built on our property, and we'd be looking at building it on right off Highway twenty-six there, on that really nice area there. So, we're very excited about that project. Uh, TCC Connect, as you know, we are moving into our second year of operation for Connect, and we now have space for them that is going to be in the west fork of the Trinity River Campus that is a standalone facility, as it was when Radio Shack had it. We have a separate address for TCC Connect because since we're calling it a separate campus, it has to have an address that is different from the Trinity River Campus downtown. And, um, I used to know the address.
Four, four, four.
Four, 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 North Henderson Street. Uh, that's our official address for TCC Connect, and that renovation work, uh, is getting underway. Ma'am?
Planning stages right now.
Planning stages right now, so that'll be going on. Um, the renovation of the academic classroom building on northeast campus is something that we've talked about for a while. We, we need to renovate that building. We'll need to move faculty and staff who are housed in that building over to, um, our northeast district, uh, center that we have for swing space. And that isn't something that's gonna start right away, but it'll get started before the year's over. And then, of course, we're continually talking about energy conservation, and we have money in the budget every year to, to work on making sure that we keep up and stay ahead after the best of our ability on energy conservation. So, those are the first for capital improvement projects. The next page. Uh, allocation for Innovation Forum approved initiatives. We've talked about the Innovation Forum now for quite a while. It is well underway. Each one of our campuses has one. Uh, some of you, I know, have seen some of the spaces on the campuses. They are very, very nice. Each campus has a person to lead, uh, the faculty and staff in helping them design their projects. That program is run by Margaret Lutton, who does a really great job in, in getting those well. We've had projects go through there, recommended by our faculty, our staff, and our administrators, and some of them, a number of them have gone through the entire process, and they're ready to go. And when we say ready to go, that means they're ready to come to the CELT. The CELT will look at all of those projects and will make a decision about which ones should be funded first. It was, in other words, the CELT members will set the priorities for funding the approved projects. As we have money set aside in the budget to initiate those projects. Uh, relocation of staff is very expensive, very, very expensive, so we put money in there under the capital improvement projects because we know that we have a number of groups of people who need to be relocated from various places around the county. We have them at the northwest Center of Excellence for Aviation, Transportation, and Logistics. Uh, we have all of Mr. Marshall's people out there, and they will be moved back to, uh, West Fork, I believe is where they're going. Uh, perhaps it's West Fork. We have people, uh, in the facilities area who are northeast campus, who are in that building I talked about. We'll need to relocate faculty and staff from northeast campus to that facility while we start working on that other building where they'll have to move from. So, and there are a number of others, uh, that we'll have to relocate. We have infrastructure projects that we never stop working on. Uh, every day, something happens on some campus. Sometimes it's five or six things every day. Nina tells me that she's going to show me the log where her district facilities person calls her generally three or four times a day, telling her about something that has gone wrong on one of the campuses, primarily because of aging, uh, facilities. So, that's an ongoing project. And then, of course, another ongoing one is the district roof assessment management continuation. You can imagine how many rooftops we have around here. So, that's, that's ongoing as well, all over the district. Now, I wanna talk with you about the 2015-16 proposed budget. This first page is the proposed maintenance and operation estimated revenue summary. Uh, the state appropriation, as you see, increased 1.893 million dollars, and that's very good. That increase came primarily for two reasons. Number one, the state found a little extra money someplace and decided they would parcel it out to the fifty community colleges, but we also earned some of that money with success points. You know, we, ten percent of our funding comes because of success points, and the other ninety percent is just general revenue funding that we get. So, we're getting 1.893 million dollars more money this year than we got last year. On the maintenance tax, you can see that that's increasing from 159.1 million to 173.2 for an increase of fourteen million dollars for the, for the maintenance tax. Uh, credit hour tuition is, uh, increasing by 1.19 for a partial year. Of course, that would be more than that for a full year, but any tuition increase that we have would go into effect in the spring semester, not the fall semester. And as it always, if you take action in the summer, it's always for the, the spring semester. And I will show you later how that breaks down. We're not looking for any increase with the community and industry education tuition-funded programs. Hopefully, we'll get some increase, but, uh, our historical perspective doesn't lead our finance people to add any additional money there, neither for the non-funded. The funded tuition comes from the state. The state does pay us tuition for non-credit courses if they lead to certifications at a certain level. I believe the, um, the, the minimum number of hours is what Dr. Gates Black, that the certificate must have. Is it fifteen or?
I believe it's fifteen.
Fifteen? Dr. Currie is shaking her head. That means that's right, right? Okay, fifteen, fifteen semester hours, and, and we can count that as certification and something, then the state will pay us for that. The non-funded, uh, tuition comes from individuals who, um, take courses and pay themselves. And then, of course, rental income and other went down from 6.5 million to the estimated 2.6 million, uh, this year, and a big part of that, of course, is because Radio Shack is, has given us back, uh, a full tower plus some of the space in the other tower that they've given us. The interest income is stable, no real increase there, and the designated reserve, we are not increasing that. And by the way, we put that five million dollars in our designated reserve, and we have yet to use it. It's, uh, it's something that's always good to have in case you need to use it, but we always manage to operate without going into that. So, it's there again this year, but we don't expect to have to use that either. So, our total increase in educational and general income would be 13.2 million dollars. Uh, the renewal and replacement fund is being, um, decreased by seven million, taking it from 34.3 to 27.3. Uh, before that was done, we had long discussions with, uh, Ms. Petty and her team about what that does to our operations naturally. It would be good if we could keep the same 34 million in that fund that we had last year, but, uh, we don't think there'll be any real suffering, uh, because we took the seven million out to put other places in the budget, and I'll be glad to discuss that with you if you have questions on it. So, then, uh, the total educational, general, and CIP income then comes to 6.2 million. Debt service, of course, we take out completely, so we don't have any of that money to pay. Uh, when you take that out, you've got a total income there of 462,000, uh, 965 dollars. When you go to the next page and you look at the proposed budget expenditures. Thank you. Um, I'm proposing a three percent across-the-board salary increase for all employees. That will cost 6.2 million dollars. Uh, there's 45,200 in the budget for faculty promotion and rank. Promotion and rank, uh, on the part of our faculty members is earned by the work that they do, uh, in the, in gaining additional credentialing, as well as some other things they do on campus and in the classrooms. Have a million four for new academic program positions, uh, million five for academic and administrative positions, 345,000 for grant-funded positions, um, 300,000 for part-time, on-call positions. All of those new positions will cost us an additional 786,000 for benefits to go along with those, and we never do a budget without planning for those additional benefits that we know must be paid. Uh, we have an additional million dollars in the budget for technology and for operating expenses, 2.8 million dollars. We're adding a half million dollars for disability support. We continue to grow in the number of this, students who need disability support among our campuses, and as you know, Ms. Aliala, you probably have never heard this before, but Tarrant County College has been a leader in disability support for students since day one. I remember...
Building over to our northeast district center that we have for swing space. And that isn't something that's going to start right away, but it'll get started before the year is over. And then, of course, we're continually talking about energy conservation and we have money in the budget every year to, to work on making sure that we keep up and stay ahead after the best of our ability on energy conservation. So those are the first for capital improvement projects. The next page. Allocation for Innovation Forum Approved Initiatives. We've talked about the Innovation Forum now for quite a while. It is well underway. Each one of our campuses has one. Some of you I know have seen some of the spaces on the campuses. They are very, very nice. Each campus has a person to lead the faculty and staff in helping them design their projects. That program is run by Margaret Lutton, who does a really great job in, in getting those well. We've had projects go through there recommended by our faculty, our staff and our administrators, and some of them, a number of them have gone through the entire process and they're ready to go. And when we say ready to go, that means they're ready to come to the CELT. The CELT will look at all of those projects and will make a decision about which ones should be funded first. It was, in other words, the CELT members will set the priorities for funding the approved projects. We have money set aside in the budget to initiate those projects. Relocation of staff is very expensive, very, very expensive. So we put money in there under the capital improvement projects because we know that we have a number of groups of people who need to be relocated from various places around the county. We have them at the northwest Center of Excellence for Aviation, Transportation and Logistics. We have all of Mr. Marshall's people out there and they will be moved back to West Fork, I believe is where they're going. Perhaps it's West Fork. We have people in the facilities area who are northeast campus, who are in that building I talked about. We'll need to relocate faculty and staff from northeast campus to that facility while we start working on that other building where they'll have to move from. So, and there are a number of others that we'll have to relocate. We have infrastructure projects that we never stop working on. Every day, something happens on some campus. Sometimes it's five or six things every day. Nina tells me that she's going to show me the log where her district facilities person calls her generally three, four times a day, telling her about something that has gone wrong on one of the campuses primarily because of aging facilities. So that's an ongoing project. And then, of course, another ongoing one is the District Roof Assessment Management continuation. You can imagine how many rooftops we have around here. So that's, that's ongoing as well, all over the district. Now I want to talk with you about the 2015-16 proposed budget. This first page is the Proposed Maintenance and Operation Estimated Revenue Summary. The state appropriation, as you see, increased 1.893 million dollars, and that's very good. That increase came primarily for two reasons. Number one, the state found a little extra money someplace and decided they would parcel it out to the 50 community colleges, but we also earned some of that money with success points. You know, we, 10% of our funding comes because of success points and the other 90% is just general revenue funding that we get. So we're getting 1.893 million dollars, more money this year than we got last year. On the maintenance tax, you can see that that's increasing from 159.1 million to 173.2 for an increase of 14 million dollars for the, for the maintenance tax. Credit hour tuition is increasing by 1.19 for a partial year. Of course, that would be more than that for a full year, but any tuition increase that we have would go into effect in the spring semester, not the fall semester. And as it always, if you take action in the summer, it's always for the, the spring semester. And I will show you later how that breaks down. We're not looking for any increase with the Community and Industry Education Tuition Funded Programs. Hopefully, we'll get some increase, but our historical perspective doesn't lead our finance people to add any additional money there, neither for the non-funded. The funded tuition comes from the state. The state does pay us tuition for non-credit courses if they lead to certifications at a certain level. I believe the, the, the minimum number of hours is what Dr. Gates Black, that the certificate must have. Is it 15 or?
I believe it's 15.
15? Dr. Currie is shaking her head. That means that's right, right? Okay, 15, 15 semester hours and, and we can count that as certification and something, then the state will pay us for that. The non-funded tuition comes from individuals who take courses and pay themselves. And then, of course, rental income and other went down from 6.5 million to the estimated 2.6 million this year, and a big part of that, of course, is because Radio Shack is, has given us back a full tower plus some of the space in the other tower that they've The interest income is stable, no real increase there, and the designated reserve, we're not increasing that. And by the way, we put that $5 million in our designated reserve and we have yet to use it. It's a, it's something that's always good to have in case you need to use it, but we always manage to operate without going into that. So it's there again this year, but we don't expect to have to use that either. So our total increase in educational and general income would be 13.2 million dollars. The renewal and replacement fund is being decreased by 7 million, taking it from 34.3 to 27.3. Before that was done, we had long discussions with Ms. Petty and her team about what that does to our operations naturally. It would be good if we could keep the same 34 million in that fund that we had last year, but we don't think there'll be any real suffering because we took the 7 million out to put other places in the budget. And I'll be glad to discuss that with you if you have questions on it. So then, the total educational, general and CIP income then comes to 6.2 million. Debt service, of course, we take out completely, so we don't have any of that money to pay. When you take that out, you've got a total income there of 462,965 dollars. When you go to the next page and you look at the Proposed Budget Expenditures. Thank you. I'm proposing a 3% across-the-board salary increase for all employees. That will cost 6.2 million dollars. There's 45,200 in the budget for faculty promotion and rank. Promotion and rank on the part of our faculty members is earned by the work that they do in the, in gaining additional credentialing, as well as some other things they do on campus and in the classrooms. Have a million four for new academic program positions, million five for academic and administrative positions, 345,000 for grant-funded positions, 300,000 for part-time, on-call positions. All of those new positions will cost us an additional 786,000 for benefits to go along with those. And we never do a budget without planning for those additional benefits that we know must be paid. We have an additional million dollars in the budget for technology and for operating expenses, 2.8 million dollars. We're adding a half million dollars for disability support. We continue to grow in the number of this, students who need disability support among our campuses. And as you know, Ms. Aliala, you probably have never heard this before, but Tarrant County College has been a leader in disability support for students since day one. I remember in the very early days, parents, in some cases, would literally move to this area so that their children could come to TCC and get the help they needed because they were disabled. In other cases, the student was able, they'd move the student up here and enroll them at Tarrant County College. So we've had a great reputation for serving disabled students. And as you might guess, more and more are coming to Tarrant County College, and that's a good thing. Telephone expenses are going to go up, 300,000 dollars. The property tax expense is going down by 600,000. The election expense is no longer needed for this year, so that's another almost 70,000 dollars. We'll get money back from leases that we're not going to use because of the, and I have to get the name of, what's the name of our new building? The district service. We're not calling it the Multi-Purpose Center, which is going to have warehouse plus other things. So we're not just calling it a warehouse anymore. It's going to be a multi-purpose center because we have space in that center for a lot of things. We're moving some people there. We're hoping that community and industry education people will teach a lot of their courses out there. We're looking at moving the people and the programs we have at Alliance Airport in that Horizon Center Building. We pay a lease on that out there and that work can easily be done in the new building that we bought. And sometime soon, I have to get you outboard members to see that. You will be very pleased at what we've purchased there. It's, it's very, very nice and you really would not want to call it a warehouse. It's a, a great building and it'll be a multi-purpose building for us. We've, we've decreased the equipment budget by 116,000. Not that we just decreased it, we just have that much less need. And of course, utilities are going down by 1.1 million dollars. David Hoke is back there, and I'm not going to turn around and look at him because he don't want to talk. I'm just going to say, "Stand up, David," and let everybody give you a hand for always working. Thank you, David, for always staying on top of that. And Mark, thank you for the CFO piece that goes along with making sure that we hit the market at the right time because timing is everything. They'll track me down, I think, from the bed and say, "Will you sign this?" Because we have to have it in by a certain time. And sometimes you don't know until the last minute that something is coming online and you can save a lot of money. So we work really, really hard and I give David the credit for staying on top of all of that. So then, we have a total expenditures of new money of 13.2 million dollars and ta-da, ta-da, we have total income of 13.2. So that gets, that gets balanced out. Wanted to show you where all these new positions will go because it's very important that you understand. One board member and I had a long discussion about this and the question for anybody, I think, becomes, "How can you afford to add this many new positions when your enrollment is virtually flat?" My response to that is, and I'm going to show you in a minute some other things, but if you look at our enrollment from 2009, when I took over as interim chancellor, you look at it from that year to this current year that we're in, 14, 15, our enrollment increased over 5,000, or it's 10,000, over 5,000 students, I believe it was, in that period of time. If you look at it from 2010, the, the very next year, to this year, we have a net enrollment increase of little over 1,000 students. So that year, that first year that we looked at was a very big year for the college. But my response to that always is, we're getting a significant number of new students who need more help than they've ever needed before. In addition to that, we have demands that have been put on us by all of our stakeholders demanding better outcomes for the money that we do spend, and that especially comes from the state legislature, the state budget board, the higher education coordinating board. Everybody is holding our feet to the fire on that. You'll see 10 positions up there for TCC Connect, 10, that's 10 faculty members, full-time, temporary faculty members, because we receive 33% more requests from our independent school districts for dual-credit courses than we did last year. And there is no way we can serve the community with the faculty members that we have been able to attract. Teaching dual-credit is very different from just teaching part-time here because you have to go to the high schools for the most part and you have to be able to work with their scheduling and their scheduling can be very tricky. So that makes it very, very difficult to just find an adjunct faculty member who can do that. I'm asking for eight full-time adult basic education faculty members because again, and adult basic education is run by Community and Industry Education, but those are the programs where we are charged with helping students get their GEDs and be ready to move into college-level work once they get that. All of the campus presidents and Dr. Gates Black tell me that the model that we've been using just isn't working. The, we've had part-time adult basic education members working for us, and now that we have rules, both that come from the state and from the federal government about what we must pay if we work people beyond a certain point, then we can't just assign any number of overloads or part-time courses, I should say, to those faculty members anymore. So it behooves us then to do something different. And so they're recommending eight full-time faculty members. That's five per campus plus those to, I'm sorry, two, two per campus. One campus already has, South Campus already has its two, who were moved from two other teaching areas to adult basic education. So those students should be getting a real bonus. Both of those faculty members have been with us for a long, long time, and now they'll be teaching adult basic education. We have four full-time faculty members there for nursing. The program has grown tremendously over the years and again, because of the ruling on teaching part-time and the limit on that, we have no option except to hire full-time nursing faculty or turn students away from the nursing program. That's where we find ourselves with that. Those last four positions are being requested because of new programs that we want to start. The Licensed Vocational Nurse, the, and then you'll, you'll need one faculty member for that and one director who will also be teaching part of the time. And we have a Director of the Sonography Program who will also be teaching a part of the time. And the Coordinator Instructor of Computer Tomography, who will also be teaching a part of that time. But you have to have somebody to coordinate as well as to teach because these people will also be expected to help grow these programs. So there will be four new programs that we'll be starting that will call for four full-time faculty members. That's a total of 26. And then when we get to the Academic and Administrative Positions, we're asking for five new positions to help our veterans who tell us that it takes them an average of two weeks to get an appointment at the Veterans Administration Center here in Fort Worth. And some of them are in such dire need of help. And so we are asking that we put another veteran counselor on each campus. We have some that are paid for by the Veterans Administration. I'm not sure how many we have, two, oh, just two. We have two that are paid for, and they move around from campus to campus. And as you might guess, trying to cover five campuses with two people is just not very good. The next one is for four Directors of Academic Affairs. Those are for the campus presidents who tell me that their work with all of these things that we're doing has gotten so unwieldy that they need an Academic Affairs Director to help them coordinate and, and drive success in a lot of different areas. One campus already has one, and I've, South Campus has a Director of Academic Affairs, and that was because Dr. Jordan repurposed some of his budget money and he was in such dire need. He repurposed that, I guess, last year, and, and so now he has that, and the other four campus presidents are requesting one as well. The next four positions are for a TCC Connect. An Instructional Designer, a graphics, need two of those, a graphics designer, two assistant deans. Right now, we have a vice president and one dean serving all of those students, and we really must give that one dean some help in, in serving those students. You're going to see some numbers here in a few minutes. The Senior Office Assistants, those two are really for the vice president who works with the high schools in, in getting all of their needs met. On the other side of the chart, you see the Administrative Office Assistant, and I cannot remember whose position that is. Reginals? Okay, whose office?
Web Communication.
Web Communication, Web Communication. The Communications Traffic Manager is also in Mr. Gates' area, but that's in Suzanne Cottrell's. We have so many things going on here with public relations and marketing until very often it's just a conglomerate of things and things don't come out the way we want them to do because we don't have any one person who is in charge of managing all the traffic there. The Grants Compliance Manager is for Jackie Mackis' area. We have increased the number of grants that we get. We get a lot of smaller grants, too, and there are grants that don't bring a lot of money sometimes to the college, but they bring a lot of other things. I signed one the other day. I think we were going to get something like 65 or so thousand dollars out of the grant, but we were being asked to serve as a mentor for another college because we have done, whatever it is we're going to mentor them on, I don't see Jackie, we've done something so well. What are we going to?
$250,000.
Oh, 250.
To Dr. Anderson's to mentor an adult basic kid.
Okay. Celebrate Texas. I'll tell you from time to time that all eyes are on us, and sometimes we have no idea who is even looking at what we're doing. But when you're out there in the field and you're doing really good things, you, you really have an obligation to share. People share with us. I mean, we don't know everything. We don't do everything right the first time, and we have a lot of, of colleges and universities from time to time. We send people to visit, we look at what they're doing, we take the good ideas, bring them back, see if we can adapt them to what we're doing. So we need a Grants Compliance Manager there. The one thing we do not want to happen at Tarrant County College is to have something go wrong with the accounting of the money that we get. You just, we had a, an incident or two sometimes in the past and we don't ever want to get to that place again. The Senior Project Analyst, there's one position there, and three positions for Project Analyst, Coordinator of Scheduling, Systems Administrator. All of those belong to Mr. Marshall, who reminds me on a fairly regular basis that we keep adding things and adding things and adding things to do at the college, and we don't put people behind them. And at some point, that catches up with you. You know, you can assign people who are already onboard to do so much, and then after a while, if you want it done, done timely, they do them well. It's just that they're overworked, and in so many instances, that's overtime, and those people don't get paid for overtime. Those are not the people we give time and a half to.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you said.
Do you want me to re, do you want me to repeat what I just said?
No, that's okay. Siri might. I'm good.
We're rid of Siri now, right? The Inventory Clerk is in Mr. McClendon's area. You know how much we purchase here every year. And, and again, we keep adding and adding and having to delete things and keep up with things, and Mr. McClendon says he's at the end of the road with how far we can go with what we have, and that he needs to add one more Inventory Clerk. We've added, I don't know how many square feet of space in this district over the last three or four years without adding any more General Maintenance people. And again, Ms. Petty tells me that she's at the end of her road in trying to get more work out of the handful of folk that she has working in General Maintenance. So that's what those two positions are for. Now, the next thing I want to show you, some of the numbers in TCC Connect. You look at the summer of 2013 and you will see 14,800 enrollments. Now, you know the difference between an enrollment and a student. I'm one student and I may be taking four courses, but I'm just one student. So when you go to the right-hand side, that's unduplicated students. I get counted only one time. So if you go to the next one, fall of 2013, there were 20,000 enrollments, 13,000 students. Spring of 2014, 20,651 enrollments, 13,243 unduplicated students. Summer of 2014, 10,750. I don't know why they don't give me the unduplicated numbers for summer, but they didn't. And fall of 2014, we had 15,178 and 11,392 unduplicated. Spring of 2015, one of the things we tried to do with Connect was schedule a little differently out of the gate so that the campuses wouldn't be so affected. You know, the numbers, the enrollment numbers on all the campuses have gone down drastically. So we came up with the idea, they came up with the idea, it wasn't mine, but I agreed with them, that if TCC Connect could hold off on offering certain courses for a certain period of time and give students an opportunity to enroll on campus, that they thought things would go smoother. And I don't know if they did or not. I never asked the question, but I do know that overall, the student population stayed up. Connect did go down there. But, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go back. Went down with enrollments, but look at the number of students that enrolled. And, and that's another thing, you, you have to look at the unduplicated students, too, because when that student comes, that student has to be served, and it doesn't matter where the student is, still has to be served. Now let's go to dual-credit next. And you can see what the numbers look like in dual-credit. Last year, I'm sorry, that's my service area. I didn't, I didn't ask for that one, Carlos, but that's okay, thank you anyway. A, a total for 2014, 15, we had a total of 13,224. Now, these are individual students being served in dual-credit. Am I right? I'm sorry?
Enrollments.
Oh, those are enrollments. Oh, okay, dual enrollment. 13,224 over 12,463 the year before. The next slide is the dual-credit growth by area. It's interesting, it's very interesting to me if you look at what the students are taking mostly, and you can see that is English. That's the first course they want to, they want to take. So the dual-credit growth increase for English was just phenomenal. Pretty modest in all the other areas. History just a little bit, but English was the main culprit. Government, quite a bit. But you can see the sections that the school districts asked us for last year was 297. The sections they're asking for this year is 393. Thus, those 10 full-time, temporary faculty members to cover all of those requests. Now, I want to move back, oh, I'm sorry, Weekend College. Unduplicated students, so far we've had, since 2014, 583 students go through Weekend College. This past summer, we had 275 enrolled. We are really, really hopeful that Weekend College really catches on because students are required to go full-time when they go to Weekend College. And we know that when a student goes full-time, that student graduates generally. And we know that when a student goes full-time, that student graduates generally much more frequently than those who go part-time. We know that. So if they follow the curriculum that's outlined for them and all the work. This program is what we call a hybrid program. Some of the courses they take online, other courses they can take face-to-face. But they always have the face-to-face option. But it's all on the weekend. So it doesn't bother them if they have to work during the week. And many of them don't have childcare. They don't have to worry about it over the weekend. It just works well for a lot of people. So we think it'll catch on, it'll be much bigger. Now, I'll go to the grant-funded positions. The new ones that we are requesting, which is nine. An instructional associate in math and science, two of those. A graduation outreach specialist from a Perkins grant, one. Director of student success and online advising from a Title III grant, one. An academic advisor from Title III grants, five. You may recall when Dr. George Gates Black first came, she applied for a Title III grant with our research and grants people. We'd never had a Title III grant before. And right out of the chute, we got two hundred and... Two million. Two million dollars to do all this work, to get us started on a lot of student success initiatives. But we had to promise that we would absorb the cost of those people. They didn't want the money back that they were giving us for operational purposes. But they did ask us to bring the people onboard if it worked out. And of course, it really has worked for us. So we are pretty much obligated, once we get through the grant funds. So we've got six of those from the Title III grant. One from Perkins, a graduation outreach specialist, who has been absolutely phenomenal in getting us our grad... I had a cheat sheet somewhere that talked about how many students. Where's my cheat sheet? Do you have it with you?
We have had our number of certificates and degrees has gone up by twenty-nine percent in two years.
Okay, because of this, the work, primarily, we should say. Be, I'm sorry. Primarily because of the work this person has done. Because what she did was literally track people down. Do you know that you can graduate if you just take three more hours? Do you know that you can graduate with only nine hours? Do you know that you've met all the requirements for graduation? We just wanna give you a degree. I mean, and she was out there working, working. And so we ended up, in 2012, 13, we had five thousand five hundred ninety-three. In 1314, we had six thousand six hundred twenty-seven. And in 2014, 15, we had seventy-two fifteen. Now, that's, that's proof that that position has really paid off. And then for the part-time positions, those online advisors have also really paid off for us. And since I don't see any of my notes, Dr. Gates Black, on my cheat sheets, I'm gonna have to ask you to fill in for me again what the difference... You have, your presidents have everything. Thank you. Yeah, but I don't see what the increase was. Somebody had that for me. Reginald, do you have the increase? Well, that's okay, we'll get it. Do you know what it is?
Well, we currently have four part-time online advisors. And they've been with us for two years. And so they have really added to our work in terms of advising case management. But specifically, through three-week winter break this past December, they were able to see fifteen hundred students in three weeks. So that attests to the work and the impact of the online advisors.
Thank you. Okay. The instructional assistant, we need a one-part-timer for that on Southeast. What area is that? Speech lab. You don't have anybody at all. Probably need a full-time person, as truth be told.
Yes, but it's part, will be settled for part-time.
Settle for part-time. Instructional associate in math and science, Northwest and Trinity, is each asking for one part-time person. As you can see, part-time on-call is forty-nine percent. And by the way, when you see part-time on-call, that means that they only call them when they really need them. So it's not like they are coming to work every day, every week, forty-nine percent. They are coming when they are needed, when the hours that they are needed. The senior accounting clerks are in Mr. McClendon's area. He's asking for six part-timers to help with the increased workload in that office. And Ms. Robinson's area, the HR specialist, one part-time person. And in communications, again, in Mr. Gates' area, two part-time people are being requested there. The part-time people don't carry any additional money in the way of benefits because we pay social security, of course. We have to pay social security on anybody who works here. Which is quite an advantage to a lot of people who come here wanting to work part-time so that they can qualify for social security. So here's a breakdown for you. The vice chancellor of communication and external affairs requests five hundred thousand. Academic affairs and student success, twenty-five thousand for a default management plan. We have to really watch the default rates of our students because we're held responsible, if you can believe that. If a student comes here, borrows money, a student loan, and doesn't pay, ultimately, the college gets held responsible for it. Because we are expected to teach our students money management tips and how to pay their debts. And you know, that's a very difficult thing to do. Many colleges and universities do outsource that so that they can get more professional help in helping the students to pay the money back. Five hundred thousand dollars is being requested for an online catalog and curriculum management system, which is something that we've needed for a long, long, long time. Nobody wants a paper catalog. I shouldn't say nobody does. Some people do. Older people want a paper catalog. Other people don't. And of course, the great thing about the online catalog and the curriculum management system being online is that you can change things in real time, and people can get information in real time. And that really is very helpful. We're working on wildly important goals. Ms. Appleman, as your representative on our Achieving the Dream Committee, and we have a new name for it now, we have outgrown Achieving the Dream. We call it...
Student Learning and Success Council.
Student Learning and Success Council. And Ms. Appleman sat with us through our entire process of determining what our wildly important goal was going to be. We ended up deciding that we would increase the retention rate for our students, first-time in-college students, by twenty percent this year over last year. That's our wildly important goal. And it's a challenge, it's a huge challenge. But we all agree that it's something we're gonna work really hard to make work. Ms. Petty is asking for seven hundred, eight thousand five hundred dollars in operational costs. The presidents are asking forty thousand for Dr. Jordan because he has not had an early college high school before. Each campus gets fifty thousand. We gave Dr. Jordan ten thousand already, and this is his other forty. Dr. Goldman tells me that if he doesn't get seven thousand dollars to put in his dance program, he's gonna take to the tutu himself. We don't wanna see that. We don't wanna see that. But the program is really, really growing and has really outgrown its operating budget and lots of other things. That's another reason why we need this performing arts center, too, so well. But he's only asking for seven thousand dollars. Southeast Campus is asking for twenty-six thousand five hundred, but that's not gonna be much when you look at what he's gonna do with it. Dr. Kupole is gonna share that among physical science, speech, English, library, and culinary arts. And the Trinity River Campus is asking for twenty thousand dollars for a sign language interpreter and health services. We have a deaf faculty member in our sign language program, which we are required to have in order to get a certain level of certification. And of course, we want our program to be second to none. And so we hired that deaf faculty member. But we also need an interpreter for her in the classroom. TCC Connect is asking for nine hundred eighty-three thousand six hundred dollars. That's for course redesign, state authorizations for distance education, and dual credit, with the majority of that going for dual credit, I think. Is that right? That's, okay. The state authorizations for distance education is something that most states will make you pay if you serve students in their state. If a student in Connecticut takes an online course at TCC, the state of Connecticut is probably looking to us to pay them a fee because we took one of their students away. And I think Dr. Morales thought long and hard about trying to go under the radar, and Ms. Robinson said, "No. You cannot fly under the radar. If we're gonna do this, we're gonna have to just pay. We gotta pay the piper, so..." Part of the money is for that. So that's a total of two million eight hundred sixty thousand six hundred dollars for operating increases.
She's not on there?
She, Northwest is not on there for any new money because she was able to do a lot of... The presidents have done an absolutely outstanding job making do. They've done an outstanding job. And when I talked about, when I got to their academic, director of academic affairs, and I said, "Is this something we can live without?" And they literally, in unison, said, "No! No, you should see what we gave up in order to keep that position." They gave up a lot because they said it was so important to them to do that. But just as I said, Dr. Jordan had repurposed and did not need new money for that position. Dr. LeBlanc has also repurposed a lot of things, and she didn't need anything extra. And that's another thing about them, they work very, very well together. And they look at who needs what the most. And they cooperate with each other that way. So if South Campus needs something more than Trinity, Trinity will say, "Well, I can live without that this time. You go ahead and do that." So that's very good. We've got a million thirty thousand dollars in the budget for software licensing. And I shouldn't even have to point that out because you know, every year, you're gonna have to pay more money for software license. That's just the way it is. The people who license the software have a bird's nest on the ground, and they know that. And you have to pay by, in our case, by user, the computer. You've got so many licenses.
Some are users and some are enterprise-wide, but there's a mixture.
Okay. And then there is a waitlist module that we are really, really excited about. We've been talking about this one for about three years. This is where you go online to register for a course, and there's no space. This will allow you to waitlist yourself. So if, when space becomes available, you can get that course. And we think we can maintain a number of students that way. Because a lot of students are only gonna take the course that fits in their life. If it's at eight o'clock in the morning, Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, I can do it. If it's at nine o'clock, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I can't do it. And they won't do it. So hopefully, this waitlisting module is going to really help that. And then the enterprise consulting services, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for Mr. Marshall to also bring in a consultant to help make decisions about what he needs to do and what area is that.
That's looking at replacing or not...
Oh, yeah. Which is not something we're ready to talk about out loud right now. For two reasons. Number one, it is ultra-expensive to do. That's number one. And number two, it is ultra-taxing on everybody to have a new system. I mean, just awesomely taxing. But anyway, at some point, we gotta talk about it. And so Mr. Marshall is trying to stay ahead of the game, bringing a consultant to help us look at what we need to do, how much time we have to do it, that kind of thing. I wanted to show you that Health Select has increased the insurance premium by seven percent. And that is something that the employee is going to have to pay. It's not out of our pocket, it's because it's... I'm sorry? Both. We have to pay seven percent more, and the employee has to pay seven percent more. So you can see, if you go all the way down to the employee and family, for 2014, 15, the cost of the policy was five hundred fourteen dollars. And for this year, it will be five hundred fifty-one dollars, or a seven percent increase. That's quite an increase, thirty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. That's a dollar sign in that column, isn't it, Kelly? Dollar increase rather than percent in that, next to the last one.
Yes.
So that's quite a burden on our employees. Then, the next one I wanted to show you is the teacher retirement contribution, which is also going up for the employee. From six point seven percent, they'll have to pay seven point two percent, which is a half of a percent increase for them to pay. The next slide I want to show you is a group of recommendations that came from the faculty. These proposals came from the faculty, from two different committees of the faculty that did their proposals, gave them to the JCC. One group is the salary and benefits committee that's appointed by the Senate or elected by how the committee is done. Karen?
The salary and benefits committees are appointed by the Senate's...
That's what I thought. Okay, yes. Appointed by the Senate, and so is the professional rights and responsibilities committee. So I got proposals from two different committees. They were asking for a two thousand dollar salary increase for every faculty member plus a two percent cost of living increase for every faculty member. They also asked for thirteen hundred dollar increase in summer compensation that we would pay up to six credit hours for. They also recommended a tuition waiver program for spouses and dependents, a reciprocal tuition agreement, a supplemental insurance enhancement and insurance embossment. I've met with the JCC a number of times. And I'm not gonna talk about their salary requests because I told them, we'll talk about that in detail later. We did talk at length about it on Sunday afternoon. Thank you, JCC members, for indulging me on a Sunday afternoon. We had a good conference call. But we will finalize what we do after you decide you're gonna give the three percent or not. I can tell you that what they've requested is more than three percent. And I have told them that I am not inclined to do more of a salary increase for one group than another group. That's kind of my, my point that I would have a difficulty moving from. The thirteen hundred dollar increase in summer compensation, I've told them the college cannot afford that. That would be about... What did I figure it was gonna be? Thirteen hundred dollars per credit hour would be thirty-nine hundred dollars for a three-credit-hour course. Right now, we pay an average of, for our full-time faculty, the average pay for summer teaching is probably somewhere around twenty-three, twenty-four hundred dollars per course. I'm looking at Nancy to verify my memory, but I think that's about right. Twenty-three, twenty-four hundred dollars. So we'd be going from that amount to thirty-nine hundred dollars per summer. The other reason why I can't support that is because I don't see a need for us to do it economically. We are able to get good people to teach these courses during the summer. Most of the summer courses are really taught by full-time faculty, anyway, because that's what they want to do, and they get first choice of teaching. and they get first choice of teaching. The tuition waiver is something I told them the college is not allowed by law to do. If we pay tuition for spouses and dependents, we have to pay it out of our funds. The reciprocal tuition agreements, they wanted me to look at other colleges and universities in the area to see if they would let our people come to them for free and their people come to us for free. Well, dependents, I could see them, the institution saying maybe, "Okay," but there wouldn't be much we would have to offer their faculty and staff people. Well, faculty, we're talking about faculty, because they already have advanced degrees. Some of them would want to get some of the things that we offer. But their tuition is so much more expensive than ours, so much more, until I don't see them interested in giving that away for our very, very low tuition in return. The supplemental insurance enhancement is something they asked us to do to look at another company. Some of them aren't satisfied with the company that we have. And they would pay, if we find a company they like, then they would pay voluntarily, and they would pay the premium for that. So we're looking at that. HR is searching, researching that to see what we can come up with. And they also asked for an insurance embusman to help them with difficulties with insurance questions. Some of you knew Anita Burdo. She worked at the college for years and years and years, and she knew all things insurance, all things. And everybody went to Anita when they had a question or when they didn't have time to deal with that question. Some of it they could've done themselves. They didn't have time to deal with it. So they went to Anita, and she would always do it for them. And Ms. Robinson is in the process of getting somebody in the HR office trained to do that. So that's, that's the goal for the faculty. Now, if you look at the tax rate, you saw these numbers last time. The maintenance and operation tax rate for 2015 would be 1,4950, .14590. We would get $7,47,898 from that estimated tax revenue. The effective tax rate would be .15813, and we would get $13 million from that. Keep going, Kelly. Wanted you to see just briefly the abollorm tax rates over time, starting in 2002, 2003. You can see that we've gone from .13938 in 2002, 2003 to .14950 right now for this year. Not very much of an increase over time, especially when you consider how little the taxpayer has had to pay over time to get us to the point where we are now with the 1, the .14950. Someone asked me last time about the, I think Mrs. Ayala, you asked this question. You were interested in seeing how much of our tax was paid by residential customers and how much was paid by commercial. And you can see that the residential people carry the big load in Tarrant County. One of the things that we've always wished for in Tarrant County is that that would be flipped, that the commercial side of the house, commercial and industrial, would carry the, the big part, and the residential would carry a smaller piece. However, the majority of the, the big payers do pay significantly more money. Next one. Showing you again briefly what tuition looks like throughout the state. Tarrant County College being number nine at $55, the highest one being South Texas. This is the Big Ten at $108. Out of district, Tarrant County College, number nine. Austin Community College being the high, $287 per credit hour. The non-resident tuition, Tarrant County College is number three in this case, $205 per semester hour versus $361 by Austin and Alamo. And of course, you recommended, and you approved, a $3 per semester hour increase in the fall of 2012, '13. It went from $52 to $55 and has been there since that point. That's where it is today. Out of district, $86. Out of state, 205. Non-resident, 205. Now, I'll give you a minute to look at that "to be continued" up there. I'm so glad to see that. That means that she is going to continue doing what she's been doing. That's a great picture. And then that middle one, you see college for kids all excited about what they do when they come to TCC. And then that last picture is a very proud young woman. My request is a 3% salary increase for all employees, and I've already told you that. That's what I'm asking for your consideration. The next one is, your board members decided that you wanted to do a tuition increase. And all of you except one said, I believe, $4, and one person said, "I'm flexible." So we went with the $4 increase rather than the 3. Go back, go back, please. The, the out-of-district would have a $20 increase. Out-of-state would have 50, and non-resident would have a $50 increase. You just heard our consultant talk about housing for out-of, non-resident students and how what a lucrative thing that is for colleges and universities because they charge so much more for those students than they do residential students. But that's, that's, I'm sorry, Shelley. That's projected to bring in $2.999 million with, with the numbers that you see up there. Okay, now you can go to the next slide. My recommendation on the tax rate is that it stays the same at 1.4950. So those are the three. 3% salary increase, $4 tuition increase. Tax rate remains the same. Questions, comments, discussion?
7% with only a 3% salary increase. We're hardly touching. When will, when will the study of a possible new provider be complete?
Well, that has nothing to do with what you're talking about, though. It, it, well, a new provider would, well, I guess it does, would give them additional help when they go to the doctor or to the emergency room or something like that. We happen to think, and Dr. Cardano is in here, that what we have is a very good policy right now. And I don't know how far you've gotten into your, your study, but, and I doubt if you're gonna find anything that's better for the dollars we pay. Do you attest to that? Am I putting words in your mouth? Okay, okay, come up to the microphone. Because this is very important, and I know, I don't know why this came up among the faculty. And I don't know, JCC members, if you know why it came up among the faculty. Does anybody wanna come to the microphone and tell the board why it came up? I, I don't know. I've looked at the policy very carefully, and I think it's an excellent supplemental policy. And the college pays for that. We don't ask the employee to pay. So the faculty was saying, "We don't think that's enough. We don't like it. Find us something else, and then let us voluntarily get in if we want to." So we're gonna do that, Ms. Appleman. How soon it will take, you might wanna tell us in the microphone how long you think it'll take to get, if you find something that the faculty members like. And we will let them decide since, you know, they're the ones asking for it. How long would it take us to get it operational for them?
I would estimate somewheres in about six months for us to do an RFP, release it, evaluate the bids, and then come back with the recommendation. So about six months, I would say is the shortest time period we would be able to do that type of, of a recommendation. Now, we're not talking about the Health Select today. We're talking about one in addition that is provided to our employees. We're one of the few colleges in, in the state of Texas that provides a supplemental health plan above what the state of Texas provides. So it is an excellent, excellent plan, which we can enhance. I mean, anything that you wanna buy and you want more, you'll just pay more for it.
So the column that says the employee pays, that's the employee's responsibility, those numbers?
Yeah, but, 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 we, we pay, we give each employee $150 every month to help with the cost. And they can subtract $150 from that $307.88 or $206.14 or $514.02. Or they can choose to buy more life insurance, or they can choose... No, you can't buy, you can't buy disability with that. They can choose to buy more life insurance, or they can choose to buy dental. We give them $150, and they do whatever they want to do with it. And, and that's what he's talking, we don't know of anybody else who does that either. I'm sorry? 200 now. Come, come to the microphone, please. Come to the microphone, please, Nancy.
Yes, Chancellor. We pay $150 supplement for the insurance, also $50 for supplement insurance they're talking about. Out of supplement insurance, we have only, we have 22, 23 employees full-time. We have 21 persons never use any 50. We have, but half of them use 150. The phone, we give them $150. Another 181, we give, using the whole 150. So it's not everybody used them. Even we give them the money, they didn't use it all. I don't know why, but they didn't.
Yeah, that's true.
So we, so we only use, half of them use, you know, some use 120, some use 100, some 121. It's not fully used, only less than over $1,000, 1,000 people fully use 150.
Other questions about the increased cost for employees? Yes, ma'am. Dr. Morrison?
I know that you recommended 3%. I didn't, I remember we talked about last time what the cost would be for every 1% that you increased salaries, but I didn't see that figure today.
2.07.
Okay.
Who's that?
That was Mr. Carter.
That's Marty over here.
I was about to say, "Check that out," but since you said it, I won't say that. I thought it was 2.06. 07?
Things change in a week, but, you know.
2.07.
Yeah, I'm usually within 1, 100, plus or less.
$2 million.
And, yeah.
For every 1%.
And I think that we said it included benefits last time, but I wasn't sure once I saw the addition up there.
It does.
You know, I, I do confess that I'm the one that had the conversation with you about the increase in the number of employees. At the time, we were talking about 51, but now I count 63.
That's right.
Plus 17 part-time. Again...
Did you divide that by half?
No, I said 17 part-time and 63 full-time. So really, you're talking about, you know, 70, equivalent of 75 full-time, you know, employees, that sort of thing. And again, we went back to 2015, and it isn't like we haven't steadily been adding new employees. We have steadily been adding new employees every year. We probably, if we add this many, we'd probably be 100-plus, this sort of thing. At the same time, the enrollment increase has been roughly 2/10 of 1% a year. It almost defines expanding bureaucracy. I understand fully your point about the demands on us are increasing all the time, but I also understand that those demands aren't showing up with cash attached to them. And we're kinda getting to a point of diminishing returns. So I'm, I'm really quite, I guess, uncertain about that extent of a staff and faculty increase. I mean, particularly, I wouldn't be surprised if we showed up next year, and we still have 50,000 enrollment, and one another, 50 or 60 people. It's just gotta stop somewhere. We can't just keep doing this, you know, all the time. And I know the answer, beautiful answer, of course, is let's just increase taxes and increase taxes. But I'm not sure that's a good solution either. So that, that was my main reaction, reaction to it. I do see the limitations. I think I actually mentioned $3, but I can go with the 4. I must've been the one on that. So basically, you're looking at, you know, somewhere, if you do that around, what, 10 million overall revenue increase? And I don't really see how you can do the salary increase and have this level of staffing increase and, and do the other projects that you, that you wanna do. I really don't. You may have the number up there, but it doesn't add up to me. So that's really it.
I don't know what's missing for you.
You got 6 million in salaries, so you, you say it's a balanced budget if we do the 3%. We do the $4 tuition, you think it is?
It is. It is a balanced budget, Mr. Carter. Absolutely. Absolutely, it's a balanced budget.
Am I the only trustee here who's concerned about this level of, of employee increase? Because if I am, I'll just stop talking, and I can, because I can count to four pretty easy. I'm the only one here that's really concerned about that. Okay?
Well, I will say this, and I said the same thing to you the other day. It would be helpful to all of us as we struggle to build these budgets every year. If we could understand what your philosophy is about spending money. I operate on the premise that when I bring something to you and ask you to vote yes or no, that that's what you're doing. You're voting the way you want to vote, yes or no. And so as Mr. Carter pointed out to me, "Well, you don't know what our philosophy is. You haven't asked." And I said, "Well, I ask every year," basically about what I present. But I, let me tell you this, from my perspective, anyway. I've said a number of times that the students we're getting at Tarrant County College today cost significantly more money to educate than before. And a part of that, part of the reason why it costs more money is because our attention is in different places today. Before, we were really, really focused on access. And we went around bragging, all community colleges did, about open access, open access, open access. But we were not talking about the revolving door. The students would come into that open access door and just go right out that back door without really being helped and wasting really a lot of money. And today, we're talking about high-touch. And as much as we've worked to automate as many things as we can and make it easier for our students and easier for our faculty and easier for our staff, we still need that high-touch. We have to have it. And it takes the money to make it, make it work. Now, I gave the Kelp members a little epistle the other day about making do. I won't repeat it here, but my life has been balanced around making do all of my life growing up. I know how to make do. I know what happens when you make do. Sometimes really, really good things come out, things that you did not expect. That old saying about necessity is the mother of invention. So if we don't have the money, if the board sees fit to not give us the money to do what we think we need to do, then the next thing you have to ask is, "Well, why didn't you do this? Why didn't you do that?" And we will say, "Because we didn't know how to do it with the resources that you have allotted us." We'll go back to the drawing board and see what we can do in a different kind of way. What, you know, everything the Kelp members have... What, you know, everything the Celt members have recommended to me came from them, not from me. It came from them, and it came through a lot of discussion. And in many instances, a lot of debate among us. You should be a fly on the wall sometimes. Well, that's true, I won't. And, and see how these, how these meetings go. But, you know, the other thing I think you have to answer for yourselves is, if you don't spend the money on what you think is best for students, what do you do with it? Save it? And of what value is it for you to save it and have your students go unserved? That's the question I would ask you. Now, we're in what I consider to be excellent financial condition. Excellent financial condition. And, and we're not, Mr. Carter and I had this discussion years ago when he first came on the board. He told me, he said, Chancellor, you keep going the way you're going, you're going to run us in the ditch. And I said, oh, no, no, I'll never do that. The only reason I do that, you know, I've lost my mind. I said, because there are so many other things. Now, we had the conversation the other day, and he, he remembered the conversation a little differently. He thought, he says, he told me, that he was talking about pay-as-you-go. I don't recall that we were talking about pay-as-you-go, Mr. Carter, and I told you that. I, I think we were talking about the regular budget. But let's talk about pay-as-you-go for a minute. When the board voted those number of years ago to double the tax increase from 5 cents to 10 cents on the dollar, you also voted to set aside a percentage of that money in a fund that was not to be touched so that we would save money to build big projects. Well, all of you know what we've done with pay-as-you-go. I mean, we could name stuff. You did the, the first big project we ever did out of that was the, the Fire Technologies Center on the Northwest Campus. And we opened it with big fanfare, one of those still highly rated centers in the country. People still come from all over the world to see that center. We have people come there wanting to train us, I mean, it's second to none. You know, we've built all kinds of things. You bought the Radio Shack building and then spent another $50 million getting it ready for students. And then you finished, you built Trek, Trendy River East for the health professionals. And then you built a state-of-the-art building on Southeast. That's your computer science facility, you know? And now you're opening the Energy Technologies Center on South, that's second to none. And last year, you opened the Early College High School and paid cash. And this year, you're opening Early, on Southeast. You're opening Early College High School on South and paying cash. I don't think anybody could talk about how we've used the money, the pay-as-you-go money. But, Mr. Carter, you were right. You keep spending it, and then you don't, one day you wake up and you don't have any money. But that wasn't what I was thinking about, because you can always decide that you're going to defer something, like we did. We deferred primarily maintenance. David Hokey, I guess, is the only person back there. Gary was here. Gary, you were here. Back, and all those days, and you know what we did? Things didn't get done, I mean, things just started falling apart. We were putting the money aside for pay-as-you-go, we were letting the infrastructure go straight someplace else. And so those are the kinds of things that I need to know how you feel about, because we don't want to disappoint you. We don't want you to be, you know, well, you know, they're spending too much money. Well, how much is too much? We, we try to be, I mean, if, if you were to look at the needs the way we look at the needs, you may ask me, how do y'all get by not doing this or not doing that? And we find ways to get by without spending a lot of extra money. And I want you to know, I get it. When you ask me, how could you dare come and ask for whatever number positions that you're sharing? And by the way, those part-timers divided by two? Yeah, not, don't just count the whole number. 71 and a half FTEs? Okay. How many?
About 69.5.
That's a lot of people. But when you take out 10 faculty members for Connect, you take out four, no, how many? Eight? Eight for, for Trek? And that's, that's 18 of that number right there, just for faculty, just for faculty. And a lot of those other different ones and sundry things, I mean, I, we'll go back to the drawing board if the board so feels that we need to do that. I don't think we need to do that. But I'll do what you think is best for the college. I just want you to, at some point, I want you, I want us to have a retreat. And I want us to really hash this out. Who are we? What are we doing? Where are we going? How do we get there? You know, what, what makes sense for us? How much should we spend? You know, some people don't like the idea of a salary increase every year. And, and I think if you have the money to do a salary increase, you ought to thank people who work for you and give that. Now, some of you said to me, we want to look at merit pay in the future. And I said, okay, we'll look at that. But I want to tell you something. Before we get into merit pay, one of the things that you have to do if you're going to be fair is do a complete salary analysis and see where everybody is. There is no such thing as merit, if you're underpaying somebody from the market anyway. Now, that's something else that we have on the table that you don't see here. All the Celt members can tell you. That salary survey that Dr. Coronado and his people do every year pointed out a lot of places where we need to look. Ms. Robinson, how many dollars were we talking about?
2.1 million.
You don't see it in the budget. What we decided instead is that we would look at those very dire needs. For instance, some of the things that were in there was for a whole class of employees, where you may have 150 people in a class. And we said, we're not going to do that right now. So there are lots of questions that I can put on the table for you to grapple with, and you can decide how you want to go, Mr. Heath.
To cut to the chase, you presented us, presented us a balanced budget. You're not proposing a tax increase. You're proposing a 3% across-the-board salary increase and a $4 tuition rate, and I'm happy with that. I think we ought to go with it.
Yes, I concur with Conrad on all of those points that he made. I do have a question, though, regarding the dual credit positions. I think they were temporary, full-time?
Yes, ma'am.
And so you mentioned in the last meeting, state mandate. Does that relate to that? And how is that being utilized?
Yes, it, it does. The state has mandated, the, the high schools, the ISDs, has mandated that those students, that they do more to get more students ready for dual credit. That's one thing. And the second thing is that they do more to get students in pathways, which also can be dual credit. Dr. Jordan has two dual, two early college high schools, if you will. Now, the Everman ISD has chosen to do theirs, and, and we've told you about this, all in-house. And theirs are all technical. And, and that is considered an early college high school. Early college high school in dual credit could go together, except that dual credit is only for 11th graders now. 11th and 12th. There is talk about moving it down some more. And if that's the case, and the, and the ISDs, of course, are just pleased as punch to have us right here, where they can come and say, well, I don't need 15 English sections, now I need 30. Well, now, you asked a question, I think I know a part of your question, you didn't ask it. Why am I doing it on a temporary basis? Well, I'm doing it on a temporary basis so we can see what's going to happen this year and how it's going to work out. And we don't want to be obligated to people on a permanent basis for those jobs. And Dr. Morales and his team tell me that they have people already ready to go to work if they can get a full-time job. They've, they've signed up for adjuncts. We also sent out, I guess, the faculty members have gotten the notice from HR. We let all the full-time faculty members in the district know that we were going to hire these people. And any of them who want to apply for a full-time temporary position for Connect is, is, is welcome to do that. So we may get some takers from within the, the district. I don't know how the presidents would feel about that at this last minute, but they would make it work some kind of way.
If I could just make one more point?
Yes, sir.
And that was, when we first started having these budget discussions, Ms. Petty's request for capital repairs, as I recollect, was 50 million?
Yes, sir.
And at this point, we've taken her budget from last year, and we've reduced it seven? Okay, so I just want to point out to the trustees, this is a continuation of the trend where you take a one-time funds for things like capital improvements and you shift it to operational cost. And every time you do that, you're going to have less of a pool of money the next year, because these costs that you're funding are going to be recurring. They're going to happen again and again, and they're actually going to increase, because a lot of them are salaries. You're going to have more, more cost for benefits, you're going to have more cost for pay raises in the future. That's how we're balancing the budget. If you know that and you're okay with it, then swell.
Except.
Yeah.
I don't want you to think of it as taking money out of a fund. There, there's, there's not a fund set aside for capital improvement projects, Mr. Carter. We've always had a fund over there, but there's never been any specified amount. And I also want you to know.
We removed, we took money away from what was there, and now we made it 7 million less. Now, we can call it not a fund or not, but that's how much we spent last year, now we're spending that much less. So it's a fund, it's a budget allocation, it's a shift in budget priorities, allocations, no matter, you know, how we want to call it, semantically. And maybe we've made so many repairs and fixed up so many things that we're not going to need that much in the money in the future. But I'm thinking that we probably are, it's just a never-ending process. It, it will catch up with us sooner or later.
Well, you're right. It will catch up with us if we allow it to catch up with us. But if I were to bring Ms. Petty and her team up here to talk with you about the process that we went through in getting to this $7 million, I think you would not be concerned about what we have cut out. That $7 million, what we've cut out, is not going to hurt us. It's just that something, it gets delayed, but it's not going to hurt us, Mr. Carter. That, I'll let Nina come up here and tell you. Come up here, Nina, and tell him that you guarantee that it's not going to hurt us. Or anything else you want to tell him about how we go about doing this stuff.
I guarantee it's not going to hurt us. We're, you know, how our projects happen is, is a timing issue. And so anything that we're talking about not doing doesn't mean we're not ever going to do it. It's how we phase it.
And everything is taken from someplace. And, and if we're, if you're there next year and they take another 7 million from you, and I know you have to stay there and stand, and say that, but, but you can't continue.
Well, we all are one big family.
Big Caffey family, okay.
We share our resources when we need to, and so it works out pretty good. So, you know, I think as a Celt, we looked at all our needs and felt like these increase in, in the personnel were more important. We talked a lot about that. If we, if we had to give up something, what would it be? Is it pay increase versus personnel versus capital improvements? And I think it was a balance, a balancing act of getting a little bit of everything we need, so. Thank you.
Dr. Morrison?
Madam Chancellor, let me express my appreciation to you and your staff for the work you've done and for the succinct manner that you've presented the budget this year. I know that there was a lot of other elements that you could have thrown in front of us to consider, and you chose not to do that this year. But two things I want to ask, two questions. Number one, should there be a capital improvement fund that we're funding? Number one, not for you to answer today. And number two, you mentioned having a retreat, and I know that, you know, there's never enough time. But that is something that I believe that has to have priority. You talked about exploring who we are and what we want to do and how we want to get there. And so as we look at 2050, which the state of Texas already has that forecast and plan, we need to be thinking forward and to think, what are we going to do? And how are we going to be, and how are we going to serve our constituents in the year ahead? So I would ask you to make that a priority. And next, I just have to ask the question. I remember one of, and I said this earlier, that I've been very well-trained as a board member by four very excellent chancellors. So when I say that there's some money that we're leaving on the table, that after this year, we can never recoup it.
That's true.
And I'm only saying that so that not only the people in this room are aware of that, but that our citizens are aware that we're making choices that we hope we'll be able to live with, because regret doesn't buy anything. And so I'm very pleased with what you've presented. I believe it will work. And I especially want to thank you for the effort you put into graduating students. It's something I had talked about for a long time, that we need to hunt out students and help them realize that they could graduate and really push that along. So I'm very pleased about that. So I didn't get everything I wanted in this budget, but that's okay. But I do appreciate the effort that you all have put into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Meehan.
I agree that, I think that's a very wise statement, that we're leaving some money on the table. But I, I'm, I'm supportive of the budget that you have proposed.
Thank you.
I support it, not supportive, I support.
Thank you.
Ms. Yala?
Yes. Thank you also to everyone that prepared the budget. Thank you for all the questions that everyone has answered for me. I do have a couple of questions before I comment, if I can, particularly around the staffing, where we were adding, I think, 10 people in TCC Connect. So my question is, when we're adding staffing, how does that, some, an instructor or professor in the TCC Connect arena, what kind of student-teacher type ratio do you have there in comparison with a student that's coming to class here on a regular basis?
We use the exact same ratio.
Okay.
The minimum we liked in, on the campuses, like 15. But that's, that's rare, that we would have that number. That number is generally in the second-year courses, where, you know, some of the students just don't come back or whatever. And we may make a class with 15. We try really, really, really hard to not go under 20. And that's one of the things, I think I mentioned last time, that I'm working with the superintendents on what we call embedded faculty, which would be faculty who teach for them, but would be qualified to teach for us as an adjunct. And some of the superintendents are really, really anxious to do that, because one of the first things they said to me was, that's great, we can do that, and if we don't have to worry about class sizes. If we want to teach a class with five students, we can do, they know we can't. They know we can't afford to do that, so they don't even ask us to.
Well, that being said, I'm just trying to make sure that we're, wherever we are, bringing on additional staffing, that we have the, the student population to, for that investment, right?
Yes.
So, but that being said.
But, excuse me.
Sure.
Since you asked that question, I did some, some calculations earlier today. And if what the ISDs are asking for, Carlos, help me out on the number of sections that was. You sent me something, it might have been in one of those slides that you sent me. Sections? No, I'm, I'm looking for the number of courses that we would teach as a result of, I think that is. that is. Shelley is so smart, she always has everything I need. I don't know if this is it or not. I was looking for the sections that will be offered, okay, we went from 280 to 293. That's what they're asking for fall, there it is. Fall 2015, they are asking from 280 to 393. And that would be-
Shelley, can you pull that back up on the screen?
She didn't, you didn't have this one?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, okay, that, okay. That's, I have a different one here. Okay, let's just take that as an example, Mrs. Ayala. If we have, what is that number, 297 from 393? 100 and-
113.
113 sections more. If you multiply 190 what?
96.
96, okay, I thought I had 90-something in there. Well, seven from 13 leaves six, all day, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay, multiply 96 times 20. 96 times 20. Who's multiplying for me? 1,920 new students that you're getting tuition for. So this is not like it's a giveaway. You put the 10 faculty members up there and you've got that many more students who are being served, who are paying tuition. And then, on top of that, we're getting reimbursed by the state. So you have to look at the whole of the situation before you can say it's just wild and woolly. And perhaps I don't go enough into those kinds of things because, you know, I try not to keep the budget workshop so long. But, Mr. Carter, I hope that will put your mind at ease about, it sounds, oh my goodness, 10, 10 more? Same thing with Trinity River. Same thing with Trinity River. You've got those new nursing faculty members who are going to take in new students who are going to bring their revenue plus the state revenues to the college, so-
I like, I appreciate the new occupational vocational programs. It's probably a pretty good idea. I just thought the overall number of new hires was excessive. I didn't say it was all excessive, just that it seems to be an overall too big a number.
Anything else? Ms. Appleman, that's my report.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Thank you, dear.
Let's take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene, and I will call the board meeting to order. And I apologize to those of you, what, yes, and to those of you, I know we're running an hour by now, and we have some visitors, and I apologize, but bear with us.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
I'm going to, as soon as the chancellor sits down, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. I just think I'm in charge.
You did it already before the meeting.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your patience. We will call to order the August 11th meeting of the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College District. Ms. Vandergriff, I know some of you were at the celebration this afternoon of the Tom Vandergriff Civil Courts building, and all of her children are in town, so we've given her a pass to go home and celebrate a great family occasion.
Absolutely.
All right, let's, we've managed to work our way to item number five on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of two meetings, June 18th, 2015, and August 3rd, 2015. Mr. Greenhill moves and Mr. Carter seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All the motion carries. Item number six, the consent agenda under tab number six in your material, consideration and approval of the use of inter-local agreements and cooperative agreements. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Dr. Morrison?
Second.
Second. Mr. Carter, any discussion, questions? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Committee reports, audit and finance. Mr. Carter?
The Finance Committee will meet the 13th. We did have a couple of our members meet earlier this week with the representative who's looking at our investment strategy. I wasn't there, Mr. Heed, Mr. Greenhill was there. Mr. Heed has agreed to kind of give us a brief review of that. If you would, Mr. Heed.
We met with Linda Patterson of Patterson Associates, and very interestingly enough, she is the one that wrote the law that we're talking about for the state of Texas. I suggested she might want to change it, but she didn't seem to agree with that, but she did say that there are some things that we could definitely do to improve the return that we get on our investments, and she's going to come up with some recommendations. If we had been clairvoyant 10 years ago, she pointed this out, when we could have got interest rates at 10% and locked it in for 10 years, we would be making a lot of money off of our investments right now. But we didn't do that, but we are now actually losing buyer power, as we all know. It's not as bad as I thought. It's not 6 million, it's only $3 million that we're losing in purchasing power. But Ms. Patterson thinks that we can at least meet the inflation rate, so she's going to come back to us with some recommendations.
Thank you. I would point out, by the way, a lot of that money that we would have locked up for 10 years, you have to use it, you know, periodically, so you can't really lock it up for that long.
Well, that's money that you don't have to use on a daily basis.
That's true.
And that's another thing she asked for, was a cash flow analysis, so she could, and I think you've already sent that to her, so he can do that, you know, set aside that money that we don't need for immediate cash flow.
Mr. Greenhill, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Governance Committee met to plan the agenda for tonight. Institutional planning, Ms. Vandergriff conducted that meeting this afternoon. In her absence, Dr. Morrison will report.
Yes, we had a very effective meeting today. We had a full house of all trustees during that meeting, so it was very beneficial. You may recall that we have previously engaged Tom Marche with PFM to assist us in determining financial feasibility and policy considerations with respect to some projects to which we're very definitely looking forward. The TXU property, the Center for Excellence for Performing Technical and Visual Arts, the future of the property at 1500 Houston Street, the future of the property adjacent to the Tarrant County College Opportunity Center, and student affordable housing. And so we were excited to have him with us today.
I'm sorry.
Did I miss?
No, I'm going to ask you to have him stand.
Okay, Tom, where are you? Did I say your name correctly?
Close, close enough. I respond to anything.
Okay, thank you, Tom. And so we have a recommendation, Madam President. And the committee recommends that we authorize to the board, that the board authorize the chancellor to enter into negotiation discussions for purchase of a property located at 501 East Bluff Street, Fort Worth, Texas. And that is my motion, and I expect a second. Thank you.
Motion to authorize chancellor to move forward with negotiations, certain properties on Bluff Street. Any discussions, questions? I think everyone was there. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. And now you're on for the 50th anniversary. You've been a busy lady.
Well, thank you, and I do appreciate the confidence that you entrusted in me. And I know that you were there. You know that it was great. However, pitchers speak louder than words, so Shelley's going to give us just a- than words, so Shelley's going to give us just a little snippet of what the Panther Island's 50th official celebration on August 1st was like.
The common people of Tarrant County got it right. They came together to do an uncommon thing. As a result of the forward thinking of these plain folks who came together with the purpose and changed the course of a community, Tarrant County College has changed lives, has changed the county, and has created a culture of success within reach. Today, we come together here on Panther Island, on the banks of the mighty Trinity, to celebrate. Thank you for coming today, and thank you for being a part of Tarrant County today and for the next 50 years of success within reach. We are TCC proud, thank you.
I mean, everyone was wonderful. And we finally got some press, Judge Davis called me the next morning, and he said, "I didn't see it in the Star Telegram." I said, "Well, give them a minute, Judge Davis." So, he was very happy to see that it was in the press, we got excellent press, I've had excellent reviews. And let me just tell you, you know, I cannot name names, because every single person who was involved really took ownership of it. And when I had another idea, all they would say was, "Okay, Dr. Morrison." And so they really fulfilled the plan to the nth degree. Our chancellor was phenomenal, she was in charge and on stage all day long. She looked awesome, she was just great. There is a little lady who told me she was a country girl. And I called her on Friday and I said, "You need to find you a place in the shade and get you a glass of lemonade." And she said, "Oh, I'm fine, Dr. Morrison." And so I need Kelly, Dr. Kelly Mills, to stand up, and let's give her a round of applause. Because of all of the people, and everyone was wonderful, every single staff person involved was phenomenal, and I do appreciate each and every one of you. And weren't those fans phenomenal? Anyway, thank you all, it was exciting, this is not the last 50th anniversary report, you will hear more, but I really appreciate everyone, and thanks so much for taking ownership of today and tomorrow for Tarrant County College.
Next week, I mean, next month?
Next week.
Okay, great. It was hot, but fun, and I think those who came enjoyed it very much. And we do appreciate all of the behind the scenes, and the day of, and the cleanup, and it was a great celebration. Thanks to all. All right, we have rearranged our committees a little bit, I need board approval, and I'm doing this from memory, so everybody listen up, make sure I have you on the right place. Institutional planning to be chaired by Ms. Vandergriff, to include Mr. Heath and Dr. Morrison. The Audit Finance Committee to be chaired by O.K. Carter, to include Ms. Sayala, a new member, and Mr. Greenhill. And the Governance Committee chaired by Mrs. Appleman, to include Mr. Heath and Mr. Carter. Motion to approve? Second. Any discussion, questions, everybody happy with your places? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 10, consideration and approval of inter-agency cooperative contract with the Texas Land Office for contract extension to provide wholesale natural gas in the amount not to exceed $1,800,000, Mrs. Petty.
Took the words right out of my mouth. We would request that you approve this. We did sign a contract in November 2011 for the original contract to purchase this natural gas with the Texas General Land Office, and this is an extension of that. We have saved $685,000, if you may have noticed in your summary that's attached to your memo. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have. I might tell you the natural gas heats things like our water, hot water, our swimming pools, our science labs, commercial kitchens that we have distributed throughout the district. And any questions?
Motion to approve? Dr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Carter, any questions, discussion, all those in favor, aye. Any opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, and chancellor, I just wanted to thank you publicly for recognizing David Holkey for all his efforts, because he does a great job on that, and I know if we didn't have him, they wouldn't be managed on a daily basis, the way he does all that. It would just increase in cost, because you really have to keep an eye on it, and no one to negotiate, but it's also just monitoring all the energy that he does. So we're very fortunate to have his talent here, thanks for the recognition.
Absolutely. Thank you, David. Item number 11, consideration and approval of purchase of network hardware from General Datatech LP in the amount of $250,737.89, Mr. Marshall.
Good evening, board. This is for equipment that is for data center redundancy, electronics that we put into the data center to manage the communication structure throughout the district, and also to provide additional wireless coverage upgrades throughout the district.
Motion to approve? Dr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Carter. Discussion, questions? Ms. Sayala.
Mr. Marshall, thank you. The data center redundancies, is it actually in a different location, different building, or is it within the same campus, it's just a different floor?
This is actually equipment within the same rack. So this is where we take a look at the critical hardware with regards to communications infrastructure. And if something fails in the rack, the piece in the rack right next to it takes over. So this is specific to hardware failure, not tornadoes, or fires, or floods.
Okay. And then the wireless coverage and the upgrades? Is it just access points that are just scattered throughout the campus, or are they-
No, this is actually, every time you install an access point, you have to pay for licensing, and you have to manage that bandwidth back through the hallway, back into your building, and back into the data center. So, there's two pieces, you hang the wireless piece, and then you have to pay for all the other things. These are all the other things.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
The technical term, other things.
I understand.
Any other questions, Ms. Sayala?
The only other question I had was, how did we benchmark going, you know, this is for growth, is that correct, for potential growth, or is it just for-
This is the key pace. What we do when, we installed wireless in phases over the years, and as new, either new functionality goes into a building, or even new buildings, we find our students and our staff tell us where the dead zones are. So, we feel we have a pretty good coverage, but we also go through with monitors to determine where the strengths and weaknesses are in the wireless environment. So, this is, this wireless coverage is for those pieces where we found that part of the building wasn't being served the way we thought it would be, or we now have a higher density population in a building, so, you know, the roles change in our renovated areas, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Other questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion to approve the contract with network hardware, with General Datatech for network hardware, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Again, I try to do this before we get into these, some seems like fast-moving agenda items, please know if you're new to the process, new to our meetings, the board has had this information in front of them for several days, and have had a chance to consider all the issues involved. Item number 12, consideration and approval of purchase of Semtech Enterprise Vault renewal from Sirius in the amount of $115,936, Mr. Marshall. Motion to approve, Mr. Heath, second. Is there anything you'd like to say? Any other questions or comments?
I do have a couple of questions. The, these are, this is for email, so are we actually archiving employees, this is students, whose email are we-
This is employee email.
Employee email?
Yes.
Okay. And so it's based, this license, is it based on the number of employ, I mean, how do they-
This is an enterprise-wide license, so-
Right.
For, we could add 5,000 employees-
So it's unlimited?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor, aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item number 13, consideration and approval of purchase of flash storage expansion from Sequel Data Systems in the amount of $166,079.55, Mr. Marshall. Motion to approve, so moved. Dr. Morrison, second. Mr. Carter, questions, comments?
I do, I'm just sorry, Tim.
It's okay, no, this is fine.
Just wanted to ask you about these, it says here, we're running on four terabytes, is that right, and we're almost at capacity at the 1,200, if I'm reading this correctly? So now we're going to 15 terabytes?
Yes.
So, but it says here, we're asking for 400 to 500 virtual terminal workstation, so, I mean, I'm just-
Those have already been purchased, the workstations have been.
Okay.
So this is the server-side memory that goes in to support those.
So, is that, I guess, my question is, what's the reason for the 15, because we're almost four times, you know, getting more terabytes today, instead of doubling it, for example?
I like to stay ahead of the curve with regards to buying when you need to buy. The virtual terminal environment, we're adding to it rather quickly, so the server-side needs to be ready as you add the virtual terminals. So we're at the point where we're adding that 400 to 500 virtual terminals. The more you add, we're putting the terminals in places where it's more than a single-use computer, so these have single uses. When we put them in libraries, and we put them in computer labs, there's a lot more software that has to be delivered to them, and they need higher levels of memory to be available for them on the server side. So it's not all, all the terminals are not serving the same population.
So, did they propose their pricing based on, you know, like increments, is like, if you get four versus eight versus, you know-
No, we tell them what we need.
And then they just buy, we just-
Yeah, we go to the DIR system that allows us to buy from multiple vendors.
Okay.
And in cases like this, the price can go down rather quickly, because we're buying large blocks of memory.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, and a second, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item number 14, consideration and approval of purchase of equipment parts and systems for renovation of 40 classrooms at Northeast, Northwest, South, and Southeast campuses, 10 per campus, in the amount of 28,000, this is an additional amount of $28,914.61, which is in addition to the original approved amount of $529,565.74. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Heath. Any questions of Mr. Marshall? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item number 15, thank you, Mr. Marshall.
Thank you.
Consideration and approval of indefinite delivery indefinite quantity contracting method for project delivery and approval of one pool of computer-aided design building information modeling standard, master building and site drawing service providers for a period of three years. No amount, because we're considering a pool of providers.
Right, it's to use the service.
Okay. Any comments before I take a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Dr. Morrison moves to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Greenhill, any comments or questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you. Consideration and approval of extension to the depository contract with JP Morgan Chase Bank NA for a period of two years, ending on August 31, 2017. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Dr. Morrison, Mr. Carter seconded, any questions, comments?
Could I introduce?
Mr. Wilson, you are the most, I promised you a cookie, and that's all I can do.
I think watching the chancellor dance on that video made it all worthwhile.
It's the simple things in life that keep us going.
Well, Mike, I want to say, first of all, welcome, we're glad you're here. But one of the reasons why I can dance so much all the time is because I think of how responsive JP Morgan Chase has been to Tarrant County College, and all the wonderful things you all do for us on an ongoing basis, and I know you were pleased to hear, were you here when I was doing the budget?
Oh, yes.
Yes, he did, he's been here for an hour or two.
So you heard me talk about adding those eight full-time adult basic education people, and I want everybody to know that JP Morgan Chase does give us money especially for adult basic education work that we do here at TCC, so, thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with you.
Thank you.
Monthly financial report, Mr. McLendon.
Good evening, Madam Chancellor and Madam Chairman, I have a, I know that this is going to be a strange comment, but we, these are the financial statements for the month of June. On August 24th, we're going to also show you the month of July. I'm happy to do that, I just want to make sure, it's a long night, that, I mean, this is something I enjoy very much doing, so I just wanted to make sure. Mr. Heath, I would never steal that away from you, thank you so much. Okay, on that happy note, okay. Okay, so what we're looking at right now, we're looking at expenses that are going to be greater than 90%, so let's look at our, if we look at our revenue, total revenue is sitting on 93%, we're looking at things that are greater than 90, so our revenue as a whole, very predictable, we're very satisfied with our revenue as a whole, okay? So now we're going to look at our expenses, again, our total That's okay, take your time. The anticipation is getting to them, not to worry. No, no, that's the expenses. No, 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 just the expenses. The expenses. Okay, we'll go with the, the expenses are really sitting, we were looking at anything that is greater than 83%, and that's exactly what we have right now, so everything else that we have are either encumbrances that are for more than one period, prepaid, or calendar paid, so we are comfortable with our expenses that are within exactly what we want. So we're going to look at investments now? Okay, let's go ahead and put the investments up. All right, so our total investments, if we look at our pools, our beginning balance is $100 million, and we have an end-in balance of 92, so we have a consumption of about $8 million. If we look at our short-term investments, we have a beginning balance of $50 million, there is no change, we have an end-in balance on 50 million, all right? If we look at our agency securities, $120 million is our beginning balance, our end-in balance is $120 million, all right? Am I going too fast? Okay, okay, all right. And if we look at the T-bill average is, right now, sitting on .49 for the 13 weeks, and it's .42 for the 26 weeks. Any questions? All right. Not to worry, not to worry, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. McLendon.
First of all, thank you for your participation in the budget workshop, and thank you for your support of the great hard work that's been done by all of our staff and faculty, JCC members and all. Want you to know that we don't take any of this for granted, and we certainly appreciate your leadership, so thank you for that. I'll start my report with Dr. Joy Gates-Black, who has two new staff members to introduce to us. Dr. Gates-Black?
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley. Mrs. Appleman, members of the board. As the Chancellor said, I do have two new employees. They're not new positions, they've been vacant for a while. It's taken us a while to find the right person for these positions, so we're excited that they're here. First of all, I would like to introduce Marlon Moat as the new Director of Academic Assessment. Marlon comes to us from Cedar Valley College, one of the colleges in the Dallas County Community College District. At Cedar Valley, he was the Assistant Director of Institutional Effectiveness. His responsibilities there included institutional research, strategic planning, and institutional effectiveness. He also serves as a SAC COC liaison and on the college's academic assessment team. Marlon holds a master's degree in information technology from American Intercontinental University, and a bachelor's degree in journalism from Texas A&amp;M University. As the Director of Academic Assessment, Marlon will be responsible for instructional assessment and program review, which is one of our Vision 2015 goals, and a priority for SAC COC reaffirmation and compliance with the coordinating board. When not working, Marlon is an avid runner, and regularly competes in the Cowtown Marathon or Half Marathon. He also enjoys bicycling, gardening, and reading. Please join me in welcoming Marlon to TCC.
Welcome, Marlon.
Thank you.
We're glad you're here. Do you grow tomatoes in your garden?
I don't grow tomatoes, no. It's mostly just the shrubbery and the general, not, not growing food.
It's not the eating kind of garden?
No.
Oh, I was just going to ask you to bring me a tomato.
Landscaping, mostly.
Everybody who comes to the microphone who has a garden, I ask for a tomato, so you don't have any.
I'm sorry, I don't have any to offer you.
Maybe advantageous to your career to start gardening.
Thank you so much. I'm so happy to be here.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
You want to say hello?
Yes. I want to thank Dr. Kurey and also Dr. Gates-Black for their warm welcome, and I had an opportunity during the summer to visit all the campuses, so thank you to the presidents and also the VPs of Academic Affairs for their welcome.
Dr. Kurey came from Cedar Valley?
Yes, she did.
And did I hear you say you came from Cedar Valley?
Cedar Valley. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I just saw Jennifer in Washington DC, and she was smiling at me. I don't know if she knows yet that.
She knows.
She knows.
She has been very understanding. I actually presented with her right after I found out that I was coming to TCC, and I said, now, if you want me to bow out, presenting with you, I'd be okay with that. She's like, no, no.
Oh, I thought you were going to say, if you want you to bow out by coming here. You didn't say that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
No, but, you know, she's been very gracious.
Well, she's a gracious lady, so, Dr. Wembish and I are good friends. We've known each other for a long, long time, and she just knows that we've got some special secret sauce over here. She knows that.
Yes.
And a lot of people are coming to join us, so we're glad you're here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Nice to meet you.
I was going to tell him that I retired from running the Cowtown when first a 10-year-old child in a wheelchair passed me. Seriously. Followed by, and I thought that was humiliating, and then a woman with a baby thing, and had two children in it, passed me and disappeared from sight, and I'm simply not competitive anymore.
The second person I'd like to introduce is Mr. Benjamin Rant. Benjamin is the new Associate Vice Chancellor for Economic and Workforce Development. He comes to this position after serving for three years in the dual positions of Executive Director for Startup New York, and Director of Strategic Planning and Partnership Development for the City University of New York. Ben has over 16 years of progressive experience in higher education, and has served in several positions in the areas of information technology, facilities, campus planning, partnership growth, and business development. He also has more than 10 years of experience in the private sector overseeing multimillion-dollar real estate investments and business development projects. In his new role, Benjamin will provide leadership to the college's community and industry education service areas, as they work to develop strategies for identifying and responding to government, business, and industry education needs, with responsive, high-quality programs, courses, and training materials. Ben will also give guidance for CIE in working collaboratively with Academic Affairs, Enrollment Services, and Student Success to create seamless pathways for students to enter and move through the college. Ben holds a Bachelor of Arts in International Politics and Economic Relations from Columbia University, and a Master of Science in Business Management and Leadership from the City University of New York. He has also completed studies in economics and politics at the University of Edinburgh. Ben and his wife Amy enjoy sailing, fishing, and cooking. Please join me in welcoming Ben to Tarrant County College.
Before he makes his presentation, have you, have you taught him some Texan, some language?
We're working on it.
Well, you said he walked, and he's from Brooklyn. I made a mistake, I thought he was from Britain, but he's from Brooklyn, he is. All right. Are you ready?
So, ladies and gentlemen of the board over here, I got a little bit of, a little bit of trouble, I need some help here. And in response to your question, I do grow tomatoes. I know a guy, he's got a bush. But sincerely, sincerely.
Now, don't, don't go getting in trouble over a tomato now, okay?
Chancellor, I have many friends who owe me many favors. But sincerely, to the board, Chancellor, I am incredibly grateful to be part of this institution. I have never felt more comfortable, more at home, and more appreciative of the staff that I have working for me. In the short time that I've been here, I have met with all of my staff members, I have incredible leadership here, and I'm incredibly thrilled to be here. So we look forward to all the wonderful things that we can do together. We do a lot of joint partnerships and joint ventures with corporations. We look to bring that ability to our students, to grow their education, to grow their entrepreneurship levels, and just, you know, fight, fight, fight tourists.
Well, I am so very pleased, so very, very pleased that you're here, and I have a very personal question.
Yes, ma'am.
For you. Why did you choose Tarrant County College?
On a per-dollar basis, you spend more money than Columbia University. I'm telling you right now. I look around this environment, I see what, how incredibly valuable education is to this institution. In a community like Tarrant, in a community like Texas, community colleges are the backbone of an environment. You are accessible, you offer anybody an education, and that is why I joined CUNY when I was there. I left private, I left merchant banking, I left private industry because of public service. This institution has demonstrated that service time and again for 50 years. I'm honored to be part of it.
Well, thank you very much, and we are very honored to have you, and I promise you, we have good work for you to do.
Look forward to it.
Good work for you to do. So we're looking forward to all the great things that you will do for us with that knowledge base you have.
Thank you very, very much.
So welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
The board members, I just want to highlight a few things on my report, and the rest of them, we will leave for you to read on your own, but I think most of you have heard me talk about how excited I am about the partnership that we're working with Dr. Vistap Kabare, President of the University of Texas at Arlington. Very, very excited about what he wants to do, what we want to do actually in a partnership with UTA for our students. If this goes well, and I'll be bringing details to you sometime pretty soon, I hope, but if it goes the way he and I both want it to go, it will just be a win-win-win for our students, and it'll also be a win-win-win for Tarrant County College, and a win-win-win for UT Arlington. One of the things that Dr. Kabare is really interested in, and most of you know that one of his main focus goals is to become a Tier One university, a Tier One research university, and that takes a lot of doing, a lot of work. He's dedicated to doing that, but one of the things he wants to do along the way in becoming a Tier One university is have a much broader reach to students of color, to low-income students, and to students who are first-generation college students. And he knows we have a wealth of those, and this would be a great place for him to come. If we work the deal, and I don't want to go into details on it right now, because lawyers are talking, and my lawyer's looking at me shaking her head, and the shake goes like this. It doesn't go like that, it goes like, don't talk about that. And I did not plan to talk about that, Ms. Robinson. I just wanted the board to know that we're excited about it, and if it works out, as I said, it's going to be a great win-win. I'm very excited about Tarrant County College having a very close relationship with a Tier One university. I think that would just be awesome. And I've been jealous for a long time of what Houston Community College has been able to do with the University of Houston downtown. They do a mammoth job with their students in getting them into baccalaureate degree programs from Houston Community College. And I haven't looked this year, but the last time I looked, Houston Community College has the largest percentage of low-income, first-generation, poor students than any other community college in Texas, and they do a fantastic job with helping their students to success. And much of that comes because of the partnership they have with the University of Houston Downtown Campus. You know, they're, they've got downtown, and they've got the downtown campus there. So we're all excited about what we might be able to work out with UTA. The other thing I wanted to mention is the agreement, the articulation agreement that we signed with Texas Christian University back on last month, in July, July 20th, and a number of the board members were there, and you know how exciting that was. I guess the most exciting part for me came after the signing ceremony, when I had challenged, you know, Dr. Boshini, while I was talking, to work with his faculty to get them to accept all of the courses our students bring to them, and of course, he acknowledged that's a big job, and everybody knows that. But after the meeting, he introduced me to the dean, and I was also talking with the provost, and they talked about knowing that that is a difficult thing, and we talked about their need to work with us to make sure that we get our faculties together, and if for whatever reason, one of their faculty members doesn't feel that the course that we are offering is something they should accept from us, that our faculty work with their faculty, and we come up with a common course syllabus, so that when our students complete that course here, there will be no question. The dean was very, very excited about that. So I see a lot of good things coming out of these articulation agreements, because, you know, even though the state of Texas says to the four-year colleges and universities that they have no choice except to take our students from community colleges who complete the core curriculum, they have no choice but to accept those courses, and they all do accept those courses. Do they count them as a part of their degree requirements when they get there? Some of them do not, and that's a problem. So getting these articulation agreements signed gets us to a closer place with those universities to get more done for our students in that arena, so I'm really happy about that. And while we were there, there were a number of TCC graduates who were there helping with the program that day, with the reception, and they were very pleased to say they graduated from Tarrant County College, and we were very pleased to know that they had. The other thing that I would just tell you, Ms. Appleman's going to report on this, but she and I were invited by the White House to attend a conference there on July 29th to talk about America's Promise, and we attended that, along with others from Texas, and she'll tell you all about it, but that was a very, very good day for us. And another great, great day for us was July 31st, and Dr. Morrison's going to talk about this another time, I just have to mention it, because Breakfast with the Elders was just absolutely awesome, Dr. Morrison, just awesome. And she's going to give you details on that, but I was very pleased to have Ms. Appleman there, and Dr. LeBlanc was also there. It was, it was a wonderful, wonderful turnout for us, the people. What I liked about it so much was that, and of course, the majority of the people who were there, I know and have known for years and years, I have never seen them so animated and so happy about the award and the recognition that they were getting. But the most important thing was, they were shocked at what they heard and saw. I'm getting too much into your program, but I just have to say.
We got a video.
We do have a video, but I just have to tell you that even Barbara Sanders, and most of you know Barbara Sanders, who just retired from the Star Telegram, he said, "Chancellor, I had no idea you all were doing all this stuff." And so it's just amazing. Everywhere we go and tell our story, people are shocked, which means that we just have to tell it more and more and more and more, to all these various groups.
And the CIE people, one of them still has to help, CIE, is there?
Yes, the CIE people really, really did help make that work, but I was also impressed at the number of community people who were there to help make it work. They were really excited about it. Then I'll tell you that on July 31st, the Downtown Rotary Club of Fort Worth had a special recognition for Tarrant County College's 50th anniversary, and Mrs. Appleman, Dr. Morrison, and I were there to attend that, and I broke protocol, I'm a member of that club, and I specifically asked for permission to say something, and they're not supposed to let you say anything. We sponsored the luncheon that day. It's a token amount to sponsor it, but we got our name all over the rotography, having done that, and we got our big seal on the podium, 50th anniversary. And then I took advantage of the friendship I have with the president and said, just let me say two words, just to. He said, "Irma, you know the rules." I said, "I know, I know, let's, let's just," I said, "I promise you, this won't be a commercial. I'll just say a few things." And so I did, he led me on the stage, and I said a few things, and it went really well. So, that's, that's all I report. The 50th anniversary, Dr. Morrison has covered that, so I would just tell you, I sent a note to all of our employees thanking them for their support of the 50th anniversary, and I think I said something like, you know, one of the highlights of that for me was to have the three past Chancellors on that stage to celebrate those 50 years together. It was just really, really a special time. I just marvel every time I think about the community and how it supports us and has supported us from day one. And in the business press this week, there is a full-page ad that we took out with private money, by the way. It wasn't a part of the budget, it was with private money, the people who gave us money to celebrate our 50th anniversary. We took out a full-page ad to thank our public for celebrating with us and having done all these things. We also will have one, a full page in the Fort Worth Star Telegram this Sunday, so you might want to watch for that. Thank you, ma'am. Did you see this?
It is fun having a birthday. And speaking of that, Mr. Greenhill is celebrating his birthday with us today, so everybody say happy birthday.
69 is wonderful. Thank you.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, Mr. Greenhill. Happy birthday to you, da-da-da-da.
It's a beautiful day in the neighborhood.
Do you want to talk about?
Oh, yes. I just saw my name up there. I went with Reg, Reginald, we went to Harshe Bay to CCA, CCATT, TACT, joint meeting. I was there as an invitee, the executive committee of CAT went down there just to mingle with the crowd mostly, and to, I really enjoyed talking with the presidents of the university and other executives, it's a really wonderful affair. I wore, I also like to spread the good news of Tarrant County College, and so I wore my TCC Vaquero t-shirt, and we played putt-putt golf. It was a lot of fun, had some good conversations. The Sirius meeting was a joint meeting of the executive committees of both the President's Organization and CCATT. It was a very frank, very, very good conversation about how we can more... good conversation about how we can more, work together more. We talked politics. We had some disappointments in the legislative session, and we're going to try to improve that. And we also talked about, not joy, the Gates Foundation, they gave us a grant to have some regional meetings to bring trustees together and other people in the community to spread the good news and the gospel of community colleges and to promote. I was shocked to find out that many, many trustees are not signed off and are not believers or have not known about Student Success Movement. So that's one of the reasons why we're having these regional meetings. There are five or six regions for trustees in the state of Texas. We're the northern region. And I hope that we can, Reg, we can have the meeting here. And more about that later. But it was a really good meeting, and I thoroughly enjoyed it.
Thank you. We did go to the White House. And after seven security stops, we got in, including a sniffing dog who I was just sure would detect the fact that I am not a dog person and would leap at me. But he was behind a nice, secure fence. There are 50 community colleges in Texas. Only 11 of us were invited. So we were very honored. Three and a half hours up, three and a half hours back, and an hour and a half in the West Wing. But it was a very interesting hour and a half with Secretary of Education, Aron Duncan, and several of his undersecretaries. Shelley has up on the screen the fact sheet that was part of our discussion. And you probably know that President Obama, who was not in attendance, but he has proposed a tuition-free community college education for all responsible students. And so the conversation centered around that. They, of course, would like for us to go back to our respective states. And they are having these meetings around the country with different community colleges in different states where they think they might have the better influence with state legislators to work together with federal government in providing these educational opportunities. And as usual, Tarrant County College, when we reviewed what we do and how we do it, we're doing a lot of it already. And we'll try to do more and help the president with his proposal. But that was kind of an exciting time to be in the West Wing. The hallway we went down, every single door had National Security Council on the door, and it was shut. But in front of every door was like an old silverware box, you know, that you got at your wedding. And if it was open, it was full of cell phones. So whoever was behind that closed door had to leave their cellphone in the hallway. I found that very interesting.
Very interesting.
We were able to take our cell phones into the meeting room. So you will hear more about this. And we were very pleased and proud to represent Tarrant County College. Shelley, you got this from the T. I recently attended a meeting on our behalf at the Downtown Fort Worth, Inc. offices. And the T, our local transportation authority, is planning and plotting for improved service throughout the county. And they very much would like input from the community. They're holding community meetings. You can go online. And of course, all of our campuses would benefit from improved service. So if you have anything that you want to say about it, they are also willing and able and available to come to your campus, to a club meeting, to a faculty meeting, to the Kelp meeting, whatever you might be interested in to help spread the word. Good news is always welcome. And this past week, we had two cheers. One for the admissions desk at the northeast campus of Tarrant County College for helping a senior citizen get enrolled at TCC to continue his formal education. So thank you, folks, for being nice to the old folks.[873.31][873.31][applause] And I don't know where she escaped to, but Dr. Tahita Fulkerson has left early her last meeting with us. How rude.[887.12][887.12][laughter]
She'll see you on Friday.
Yes. Come to her party and hug her neck. Here is a cheer to her, to Tahita Fulkerson, for her years of service and leadership to Tarrant County College. Best wishes and happy retirement to her.[904.01][904.01][applause] Yes, indeed. I'm glad she's not here. I'd probably start crying. We are going into a closed meeting. I anticipate it will be short, brief, possibly some amount of action afterward. But your excuse to go home, thank you for being with us. And we think our next meeting is August 24th. But stay tuned. We may change that. We are adjourned.
Reconvene this meeting at 8:55. There is no business to transact and so we are adjourned and we will have a board meeting on August 24.
Thank you.